Madam Chairman, we're live.
Welcome back to our Wednesday, July thirtieth meeting. Next up is our ten thirty action item, Director Bingham.
Good to be here again. I just have two bids for you guys to open. These came in to me Monday before they close the business day and they're both sealed and for your pleasure.
Alright, somebody will record for me, please. The first bid is from Falvey Earthworks.
Falvey?
Falvey, yes. Our Sampson Trail Project. And Director Bingham, would you like just to tell the general public again, we went through a different process for this, so we actually did a request for qualification this first, which showed the requirements that we were expecting from a contractor, but that now when we read these bids, we have to look at the entire bid and find out who is best suited to do this for the qualifications, not necessarily low bid.
You're not obligated to take the low bid on this. It's a little bit different than some of our other contract or other bid processes. If you guys decide that you're not taking a low bid, then you definitely need to be able to justify why we're doing that. But that's part of the pre-qualification process was that it does give you guys a little bit more leeway in making the decision.
Okay, okay, so this bid is two hundred thirty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty dollars?
Two hundred and thirty-nine, four hundred and thirty.
And I'm going to allow you to go through this and make sure that everything that was requested and required of the bid is present, but I do see a insurance, occupational license, so proof of bonding, proof of insurance, or proof of public licenses in this one, so. Okay, the next one is from Coles LLC. I think I'm saying that correctly. This bid is three hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars.
They're looking at the whole project from Sampson Trail all the way.
It would be from Elo to Pearson.
Elo, yep.
That should include, you know, just about a mile, point two, I believe, of pathway construction, there's some traffic control, and we're providing some of the materials for that project.
I want to make sure that the scope is the same since there's a large discrepancy. It says Sampson, okay, relevant projects, oh, that's experience.
Almost a hundred and forty thousand dollar difference?
A big difference.
It says phase two, so if this was lined out as phase two, then.
Yeah, one of the unknowns in there was our traffic control, as far as what we would be required to do.
They have a thousand hours at fifty dollars an hour, traffic control, single lane closure with flaggers, that's in there. Install twelve inch uncrushed type-two subbase gravel and install import owner furnished recycled asphalt. Establish completed trail. Alright, we have two bids.
What they used on the other one was crushed asphalt.
It was.
And they rolled it.
Watered it and then rolled it.
Extra nice. More space.
So there is a couple differences, Dave. Falvey doesn't have any mobilization. I don't see, erosion control, free removal. I have to look at these, just make sure that they are.
Take your time.
Apples to apples. Do you want a chance to look at these before we? Well, I mean, he's got phase two, it should be exactly the same as phase one, so if he didn't bid something, that's on him, right? Alright, what do you guys want to do?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Falvey bid for two hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
I will second that with the contingency that it's a, that after complete review.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I'll give these back to you, you can review for, make sure everything is what we had requested. And that's exciting if we're within our.
Be impressed in.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Alright. Up next, presentation are our buildings and grounds. Have a few action items for us and some discussion items.
First one I have is the application for the junior rodeo.
Okay, and thank you for sending on the insurance.
Yeah.
We just know that it's in place, so.
Yeah, and like I say, generally, even if it's approved, if they don't have their insurance by the time of the event, they don't get to proceed. But we do have the insurance. I wasn't aware until this year because it was always on the program and seemed like it was part of the fair, but it's, it's not involved with the fair board or the rodeo board, it's a private individual puts that on each year, so. So it needed to have this, so I do have their application for you to sign, so. If you guys are okay with that, then.
My only question is, it didn't go through legal?
Yes, it did.
It did. Oh, our copy's not signed off?
No, mine is, I have, I have the, um, I have it right there, it's all signed off on, everyone's signed it. So, yeah, I have that and I do have their insurance, which meets the requirements of the county and stuff, so.
Awesome.
Got a motion to approve?
I would move that we sign that agreement for the special event on property owned by Valley County for the Colton Jones Memorial Junior Rodeo at the Valley County Fairgrounds.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
I just noticed that the contract says the end date is seven eight twenty twenty-five. We'll probably need to change that. If this contract can't end on July eighth, then the event's in August.
What do you put down?
On the front page, on the signature page.
I think that's when you sent it in. They put the date, then you sent it to me.
I don't know what you're looking at, but is it still valid then?
I don't know, it's just the sheet that we got, the cover sheet. That's the contract that came seven thirty-one and ends seven eight twenty twenty-five. Clark, is it a big concern what the date is?
As long as it's accurate in the actual agreement, would be my biggest concern. I apologize, it does look like the, sent prior to legal and myself signing it.
So the actual contract says date of event is eight seven.
I think we're absolutely okay then.
Good catch.
And then the second one I have is the addition of the balcony on the concession out there for the announcer stand and stuff, and, let's see, one, two, I, the only thing different on this is the funding will come out of the fair boards. Not out of the maintenance, the, for the fairgrounds, so. That's where it'll come from.
So the fair board is paying for this? It's not out of your budget line?
Yep.
Okay.
Are, are they gonna be able to get this done in a week?
He says they will.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
So.
Did everything else get updated and completed that you were concerned about?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll clean up, met one down there, we went through kind of the punch list on it, and so they've taken care of all the touch-ups and things that need to be done and stuff.
Will I make a motion that we sign the agreement? For the announcer stand, fairgrounds. Irish quality builders.
It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the fair board understands that their, those funds are being used to improve county facilities.
That's what I did when we hit the last fair board meeting, we were down there, explained to them that I was gonna be using their, their funds, kind of can't find another page now, to pay for these, is what I did.
When you say their funds?
Their fair board funds.
The money, are, are they writing you a check, Scott?
I'm just taking the other budget line.
Okay, so it's not their funds, these are our funds, so that's, if they write you a check, it's their funds, their funds are a total separate bank. So, these are the funds that the county is loving to be used on the county fairgrounds.
Okay, well, that's what's coming out of.
You don't even have to have the fair board's approval for that.
What?
To use that line item, doesn't have anything to do with the fair board.
Okay.
It's like, I think you said you had like twenty-eight thousand left that need to be paid.
What's that?
Over on that.
Yeah.
So that's what Sherry's talking about, that'll come out of, of that levy amount.
Yeah, and that's, this'll come out of that levy amount too, then, so it's gonna come out of.
It's just our budget, as long, if Doug's making the payment, it's county funds.
Okay.
They're writing you a check, they have a fund at a different bank, then it's theirs. I don't want, I don't want there to be, well, we paid for that.
Okay.
They didn't.
Because I, they're understanding that seventy thousand's still coming to them at some point this year. Okay.
They have enough to put on the fair and rodeo.
Okay.
Their carryover is plenty.
Okay.
It's being used to improve the facilities, your Valley County facilities.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, that's, that's the fun, at that time I hadn't, you know, I wasn't aware, you know, we could use that money, so I put my maintenance budget on, on the, but my, my plan is to pay for this out of the county's fair board levy money, I guess then.
That's perfect.
Okay.
Those are still just using those funds to update the fairgrounds. It's just, I just don't want there to ever be a question of, you know, that the fair board used monies and that it's theirs.
Okay, okay.
County, county facility, county funding.
Okay.
We're just providing it for their use, that also use year-round, if somebody else wants to use that.
I just kind of got from the last meeting, they thought their levy money was again coming this year, but.
They don't need it, they have carryover funds, they're gonna make more money at the fair, so unless the fair doesn't make money, and they go in rears, then we'll have that conversation, but.
Okay. Was this proved in, or, or had to make a motion, is it?
Oh, we did that.
We did that.
Okay.
You get confused when we get there, we need to sit down and have a full conversation on this. It's been confusing for the six years, I finally have it in my brain, I am, I understand it.
So while we're kind of talking about the fair, I have another question, is, what's the bathrooms and stuff? I, I know we're responsible for maintaining the building and stuff, but is, am I supposed to be supplying the toilet paper and all the hand towels and everything for it, and during the fair, are they responsible for keeping them cleaned and providing those things? Because I've been providing the, all the dry goods and everything for that, I just, just kind of want to get clarification of.
I think that should be a cost of doing the facility, or doing the.
Doing the fair.
Yeah. And stuff, I know, and then, you know, we always end up at the start of this having to have them cleaned, is, is that on them to have them cleaned, or is it, is that part of me making sure the buildings are ready for them to use?
They pay Randy Redman to clean all through fair week, I don't know if.
Yeah.
Re-clean.
I know that part of it, and I provide him with all the paper towels, toilet paper and everything they need there, but is it their responsibility to supply that to him?
I think it, it's easier that if the county just does it.
Okay.
So, if, if you think outside of what the fair would be.
Yeah.
If we had a special event coming in, we would be preparing the building.
Yeah.
To make sure that it was clean.
Yeah.
We would be charging a fee in order to cover our expenses during that special event. We don't charge them a fee, but they do need to, I think, I think somehow account for, you know, that type of an expense, so that it's part of the overall profit and loss for the fair when it comes out.
Should be, should be.
I don't know, that's my feeling, I try and, I'm, I'm just trying to keep it simple.
Yes, how, like, how much are the paper towels and the soap and?
You know, I, I just, I ordered the roll towels, I'd have, we have enough, we had enough toilet paper, so we went down to inventory, because they kind of keep it in that center section of the old bathrooms. And I ordered some extra roll towels, I'd have to look, you know, it's probably, probably two hundred dollars worth of, you know, materials, you know, and stuff. I just, you know, wanted, you didn't know if that was part of their responsibility since it's their event, and we don't, it's like, for the special event, we don't have any fees associated with those, or if there's something we need to look at doing, so if somebody comes and uses it and doesn't clean up, then we have to go clean it up, or.
The fair portion is a county event.
Yeah, but I'll just say if, sort of like the special event, you know, it's like the, I guess, I don't know if they're gonna do the Matt Loomis Memorial Bull Riding this year, that's, you know, that.
There's supposed to be a fee for all of those events, we can waive them at the county, at the commissioner level.
Yeah, but there's not, yeah, there's no fee on the application, you know, that comes with the application or approval of it, I don't even know what the fee is, if there is one that we're waiving, I know when we've been doing nonprofit things like the Memorial Bull Riding and stuff like that, we haven't, you know, charged nonprofits to do it, but, but the only other one we have right now is like the Long Valley Flower Gardening Club has their flower sale at the beginning of the year, but.
Probably not using a bathroom, that.
Yeah.
They are.
Is there supposed to be a fee with those associated with these applications, or?
I believe the policy calls for a two hundred and fifty dollar fee for an event. We need to look into that, Terry, maybe that's something we need to work on moving forward, I think that we do need to.
Yeah.
You know, start that discussion, I, I'm hopeful that this event, then you will be, use year-round.
Yeah.
And, yeah, we have to recoup the costs.
Yeah.
The county for that, but Commissioner Caldwell's right, this is a county event, so I think, you know, a couple hundred bucks, we just provide the product for it.
Because we have, we have additional use of the power down there for all the vendors and everything and stuff, so, I guess we pay all that and stuff too. Okay, just trying to get clarification on that. Then we had the pickleball power up there, we got a bid to, because the pole that did fall over, did have power connected to it for the pickleball, I never knew there was ever power run to that, because I wasn't involved with the, the running, I just got notified that my power pole for the recycle center had fallen down, and that's when we found out had power to the pickleball courts, because the addresses were messed up, but, so we got a bid, it's ninety-four hundred dollars to repair that and install a new pole and panel and everything to get them back up and running again.
Power on that pole before, I don't know what they used it for, they must have done something in the past that wasn't just for pickleball.
No, if you look at the power pole, it, it came off of each of the north and south sides of a main power pole, and they had all these large disconnects on it.
Canal plugs.
Yeah, that they had, I guess, used as a fire camp at one point.
Oh, so you had spider box cords coming off of it.
Yeah, and then they had, there was a whole bunch of phone lines that came off, there's a bunch of it all wound up there, and then talking with Jeff, I guess they held snowmobile races there at one point and stuff, but I guess, you know, they haven't been used for a long time, and then power had been run over from the one that fell over to their container that they store stuff in, and it's like I say, I wasn't aware any power was being at the pickleball courts, but to repair it, that's what we need to do, I don't know who, is that on me to get it done, or?
So is it all over?
Or the pickleball people, what?
Is it all over?
No, it's underground.
Well, it is underground.
It went underground.
There's two temporary poles, one fell over, the one that they decided to hook up to underground.
Rotted off and fell over, I know power came and pulled both meters, even off the one that's not in use, and so, to get them back up and running, we gotta put another pole back up and get it reconnected.
Did anybody look at the MOU with the power ball, or with the pickleball group?
No, I haven't seen the MOU for it.
It was a.
Clark, how much does the pickleball courts make yearly?
So they, the pickleball, they never had power there before, did they?
I guess this was installed at the time the pickleball courts were.
I don't remember them having any power there.
Well, you don't see it, because they've got that big container that they use as their storage, and I thought it was actually a road, you know, off the, over to those power lines, and actually that, that is the trench that they dug from that, that container over to that one existing.
Out in the field there.
We have pole there and tied on, and it happened to be the bad, multiple bad pole, you know, rotted off, tipped over, and power came over, disconnected it from the main power pole down, and then pulled a meter on the other one too at the same time.
Just killed all of it.
And killed it all out there.
So they do have a receptacle and an AED by the courts themselves, so that AED needs to be charged for it to operate correctly.
Right. That's a.
Commissioner Caldwell, this year we've collected four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
I think my feeling is because it's county property, we need to probably pay for the pole, but I don't think we need to pay for the power bill.
They're using it. Ninety-four hundred seemed awful expensive.
Who, who is the quote from?
I Stay Electric. I was gonna bring it with me, but I forgot to, I mean, it's, it's, it's one of the best detailed bids I've seen for a long time, because they broke out everything, every nut and bolt and stuff, but, and if they can reuse the panels, it won't be that high, but they're gonna take from that point where it was a trench over and move it closer to the pole.
There's no reason they can't reuse those panels.
And there's another pole standing there that's pretty solid, I don't know what the cost would be to trench over to the other one, it's, what would you say, fifty feet?
Yeah.
And it's still standing, so it'd be fifty foot of trench and hook up.
But I, I don't know, in two years, that one will rot off and fall over too, so, I don't want to, it's, since that one was installed at the same time and it rotted off and fell over, I don't really feel comfortable hooking onto the other one, but.
You shouldn't be failing this fast.
Yeah.
They're treated power poles.
It is, and these were, they were the green pressure-treated poles, that one rotted right off at ground level. Or we can try it, and like I say, in a couple of years, have it done then.
Yeah, no, I, I, I just felt like that price was awful high when you said that, I've been doing this my whole life. There's no way.
I think it's county property, I think we need to replace the pole also, I think, I think the power bill is being paid out of the receipts though. I mean, it's kind of like any other park.
It hasn't yet, and that was what I proposed, is, since we are taking money in there, is the rec department would pay the power, it's, it's very minimal, it's twenty-five dollars a month, right now.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's just like Wellington or any other park, the, the income offsets the expenses, I think. It's my feeling.
No, it's fine, it's fine, that's part of our rec, so.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to approve that?
I would make the motion that we reinstate the power for the Lake Fork Pickleball Courts.
Do you want it to include, and with the power to, the future power to be paid out of the revenue?
With the future power to be paid out of the revenue from the pickleball courts.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been a, just a little discussion, I would like to see some more quotes, if both you guys think that this is too high, let's get, let's get a couple other quotes, please.
I'm just looking what the power is for the remodel, the transfer station, and it seems that that's, that's what we discussed, we're gonna have a chance, we, we, I'll get, I'll get some more quotes for you, I'll look, it's, it, talk to Cody and see if we can do something cheaper, but one thing the engineers didn't include on the transfer station in.
Let's finish this first.
Okay, are you, okay.
We haven't voted yet, so.
You're done?
The movement in second are all in favor? Alright, what else?
So on the transfer station, catwalk route right now, the floor is all taken out inside the building, the scales are taken out, they're installing the fire tank this week, get that completed over on that side, and the temporary pad's working good, other than the pad that the excavator sits on up above to load the trailers with is failing, so we're gonna close the transfer site at three o'clock on Friday, and then Granite's gonna go back in and rebuild that and cable the blocks together and stuff to improve that pad up there. Like I say, we, engineers didn't include anything for electrical design, because like I said, they didn't have any electrical engineer in their office or something, so we, we budgeted thirty thousand in there, but then, upon inspection, we went up there, the panel that's on the northwest side of the building is in pretty bad shape, the conduit's coming out of the ground or broken up, or the service comes out and runs north alongside the building, it's, the conduit's got a crack or break, it's sagging. So the bidding, bidding includes redoing the power, putting it underground alongside the building, coming up, installing a panel there, and putting a new service in, then from that panel, putting one inside the, it would be the southwest corner of the building, because in the winter, you can't access that panel with the snow coming off, this new panel will have a cover over it to protect it, it will not be attached to the building anymore. We've got the power going to the fire tank, our new scales float in the, the water collection tank that's coming off of the scales down there, and reconnecting to the lights, and that's all, we've got to repair the power at the wellhead, because the conduit for up, it is broken, and then, there was no exterior lighting on the old building, so look at, put the exterior lighting on that, some additional lighting on the maintenance shed, there's lighting under the new Z-wall canopy covers, and then lighting for the tunnel and stuff, so we're looking at a hundred and eight thousand dollars to do all the electrical on that.
They, they just, the architect just never factored that in. That they they just the architect just never factored that into the whole project?
No, it wasn't part of uh package and ask Great West and you know they. I don't know if they really gave us an answer on it, other than they didn't have an engineer in their office to do electrical work or so.
They still should have included it with the project though.
Yeah, but it wasn't. And then that's we have power going, cause we're we're taking the fueling station from the east side of the building and bringing it around. Putting on the west. We're gonna reuse the canopy and in the eco blocks, just only additional be. Pouring a pad to set it back on over there and to and uh power and an emergency shut off switch for that.
Scott, on the the road department building, we're asking the architect and the engineer to sign off on everything. For any changes.
Yeah.
Have has Great West looked at this and signed up on this?
That's all change orders go through them prior to them. Um we kinda had discussion on how that chain was working. Cause um they didn't like that. Darrippe Construction was sending a change order to me to sign first and then to them to review. Um and I didn't agree with them, cause if I don't sign off on that change order, it stops right there. It doesn't go for their review. And then once I say, yeah, let's review this change order, it goes to Great West and then. They review it and recommend whether approval or not, they sign off on it, then sign it, send it back to me to sign off on. And then it goes forward.
It's kind of different than we're utilizing in the road department. I mean, they, it has to go to that engineer first. Before it comes back to you. I mean, that's putting a lot of responsibility and liability on you.
I'm not approving, I'm not approving it at that point. I'm just wanting, I'm just, you know. Darrippe comes and says, we want, this is what we got, we want you a change order. If I don't wanna do it, it stops right there.
Yeah, but that's put on you then instead of an engineer. You're not an engineer.
Well, it's it's not so much on me, it's just, you know, you know, things like electrical and stuff, there there are things that. It's just, you know, I don't, I don't wanna spend the money on it. You know, I don't think the county should, you know. Uh uh they wanted to redo the roof, you know. It comes to me first, no, I don't wanna do the roof, cause the money's too much, so it stopped right there. It didn't go for a review or anything else. I'm not, I'm not approving or I just want, you know, wanting it, you know. If I'm not, if we're not, I don't wanna spend, I don't wanna spend the county's money on it. I'm kinda trying to stop it at that point.
So the hundred and eight thousand um.
Well, it's minus the thirty thousand we already have budgeted, you know, to cover it. It was that when we put in the budget, the bid. To do it, you know.
A hundred and eight thousand for power?
All yeah, all remodeling, all the power and stuff there.
Is it that one single quote too?
What's that?
Is it one single quote?
Well, that's through the, this is through the the con, the contractor out there, so they don't, there's no required for the contractor to go. To get additional quotes.
I understand that maybe there's not a policy, but I still think bids are oftentimes a very good idea.
Well, your general contractor is, has their subs they use and this is his sub he uses and.
But it's not under the the scheme that the contractor's under. It's separate. You 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 said it wasn't included as part of the transfer station remodel.
But it's part of the the general contractor's scope of the work out there, cause we did budget money for it, just not enough.
Oh, for part of the electrical, but not the whole.
Yeah, not the whole thing, yeah, yeah.
So once you got into it, you found that there were additional requirements in order to bring it up to standard.
So thirty thousand off the hundred and eight, so you got sixty eight thousand we got.
Yeah.
We gotta come up with.
So the electrical was considered, but it wasn't considered to scope and so who was that, who who missed that?
And that's why I want the engineer to tell us, you know, why was that not looked at?
Yeah.
Either way, it's gotta be dealt with, so we're gonna.
Yeah.
It's gotta go through channels.
And I say, you know, it's, you know, and it's like with remodels, it's kinda like peeling a bad onion. You keep. The more you peel, the more you expose and at some point, you kinda gotta draw the line and say, okay, that's it. And that's kinda what. Talked with with Darrippe yesterday on our meeting with, cause every Tuesday we have a meeting with. A a Zoom meeting with the engineers and um I've I've kinda had enough of the change orders, we've kinda gotta. But it's, you know, it's, we just got in, we tore the the floor out. Now we found that there was a cap back over um. Uh the actual retaining wall that we're now, we're gonna have to deal with how we're gonna replace that and. Uh or incorporate it back into the floor and things. It's just a. You need, like I say, I think you have it on the agenda to go up next, after the three o'clock next uh. Look at the building now with nothing around it and look at the actual condition of the building. I mean, that that thing is thrashed.
So are the recommendations to do these things coming from the engineer?
Well, as far as what things?
Whatever you're asking us to improve upon. I mean, it's now that the floor is gone and you're seeing something else, it sounds like.
Well, it's something that has to be done to put the floor back in, so this is.
Great West is giving us this recommendation some way.
Yeah, they're they're involved in it. I mean, they they're gonna have, their engineer's gonna have to decide how we tie the next tipping floor. Into this cap that's on sitting on top of the retaining wall for the tunnel for loading. I mean, all this has to go, all this goes through engineering review.
That's why I just wanna make sure is that at the end of the day, we have an engineer that's gonna stamp this.
Yeah.
And tell us this was built, you know, to their standard and.
Respect.
Yeah, this, you know, it's like right now, they're gonna finish uh with the fire tank and then Granite's gonna move back inside and then. They're trying to remove that cap, cause it does have embedded rebar and see if we can re reuse that rebar. And then we're gonna have to form up, it'd be a permanent form they call it, cause the steel for the loading chute. That loads, uh that funnels it into the truck is kinda overlaid onto that cap, so. They're gonna put a permanent form across that opening. It's gonna be created by tearing that cap off. And then pour back against it with the, when the, and include it all as part of the whole tipping floor.
I just want it to be engineered.
Yeah, it will.
Make sure at the end of the day, we don't have a lemon.
Well, everything, like I say, every change order is engineered or engineered reviewed out there. Nothing is, I just sign off on it and it goes from there. Every, that's part of their management of the project along with. The the pay request. Everything goes to Great West and is reviewed and then, so everything is engineered we do. I I don't do any changes, you know, without their, you know. Um review and approval, or nobody does any changes, I should say.
So I'm pretty new to this, but with the road department, we have been updated on all change orders. And we have to sign off on those. Why don't we sign off on these?
Cause I was given authority to sign off on change orders up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Of the commissioners?
Yes.
Last year, we went through all of the directors and gave them override authority.
That's a lot of money to. To authorize one person, I think. Um that might be, I think that's a discussion for the future that we're gonna need. I I I would like to see that.
They all had different authority levels, but yeah, that can be reviewed.
Let's keep going forward, I guess.
Yeah, the 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 temporary pad's working really good. One of the things we have come out of this, and we did have a Zoom meeting, I've told you, with. Terry's boss Travis and then Chris Welker, who we've dealt with in the past, who he's actually over this region, um. But they're getting more, they they lined up more trucks, more drivers, more contract drivers, and they're getting about six loads a day out. And they're keeping up and then what we're, you know, and that's what we told Chris Welker and Travis, they need to do six to eight trucks a day. And they'll keep tipping floor clean. And that's what they're, they're keeping up up there right now with what's going on the pad.
Uh I told Neil, I don't know if that got passed along or not, the hospital got torn down in McCall.
Yeah, that was a.
That's probably where a lot of your stuff was coming from.
I did, yeah, yeah. And there, and let's see the. The thing is now people are buying property with houses on them and tearing them down um and stuff, so. Cause we used to see one or two tear downs a year, now we're seeing two every month, you know, coming in. And then I got coupled on with the hospital at the same time. Um Terry's kinda suggesting we're gonna keep the. Look at keeping the temporary pad up there, since it's asphalted, it's a good pad and um get a direct. House tear down the stuff to that and then it will be loaded from there. Um we talked kinda with Terry and his. That they'll have to have another excavator, they can't pull the one out of the building down there and load those. Or they're suggesting is tear downs have to go in roll offs and then um. I know it's a long way to go to pay yet with the roll offs, um um I might get some pushback from the contractors, cause that cost would be tremendous. They possibly could go to Goodrich over there at council. Um the ten wheelers I know um. Uh make sure we're not haul their long haul trucks to Goodrich anymore, cause of the poor condition of the site, just be, tears their trucks up. And stuff, so um Terry's gonna go, I guess, Thursday over there. I'd like, I've also been told and um actually from Joe. That even taking personal deliveries out there, the the um it's also an unlined. Landfill, so they're only can accept so many tons per week or month out there. Um. They exceeded it a couple of years ago and we were no longer allowed to haul there. Um but I know, even if we are, Terry does not like to send his trucks there, cause those forty eight footers and stuff, it just, he says, it just. The the road in is bad and the conditions of the site are bad.
It's too bad.
And it doesn't cost us anymore to haul to like to pay it to or there, cause we're hauling per ton with no mileage. So we could haul to ten buck too and it wouldn't cost us anymore, cause it's all per ton.
Have you talked to him about taking C and D totally out of that transfer station building? You know, like these contractors come in there and they dump it. Instead of dumping anything there, just household trash and stuff goes into that building. But up on top, it's C and D up there. If they had these big huge sided dump trucks. But C and D and that thing, cover it and take it to landfill. I mean, keep it out of that building. That's that's a huge amount that they dump in there.
Yeah. Well, I thought we were looking at, you know, doing the tear downs that way, you know, either put it on that pad or. I make them put it in the roll offs and uh take the roll offs and keep it out of the building. Um.
We are out of time and I think that we need to have a large conversation and we need. Not a five year plan for this. We need a fifty year plan for, you know, what we're doing. Part of it is a new transfer site, but with the mine coming online, I mean, they have a separate contract to take waste out of this county. I mean, how do we all collaborate together? Try and find a long term solution and move forward with that.
Cause it might, if we have the ability, yeah, we could take, you know, the mines trash, but we have to have the ability. That's the difference.
Yeah.
We're creating our own landfill.
And I'm sure they, if they run enough trucks, they can handle what's coming in right now. And I think with the Z wall and stuff where they can, you know. We're we're keeping the residue, the small loads out of the building and not, you know, things will. See, if they will maintain the six to eight loads a day, then I think they'll keep up.
You also need to look in the future, because you know, when your neighboring counties decide that their landfill is full and you're not dumping and we don't have a plan.
Yeah, we need a fifty year, great, hundred percent. We will have to do that as we move forward, so.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Guys.
I'm assuming is Mackenzie online? Up next is our public relations.
Individual. I thought she was on vacation. You're you're calling in for, oh, you're at home. You're not on vacation. Been at home for like two days. We're in that like, do a like quick pit stop before we go again, so it was actually fortuitous timing. Alright, well, I will dive right in so that we stay on track here. Uh just a quick overview of social and website. To kind of bring us up to speed, so our Facebook page, our primary social media account. Uh we had about two hundred and seventeen thousands impressions over the last thirty days, uh which is great. Our engagements, meaning anyone shared it, liked it, commented, um you know, clicked a link, that was fourteen thousand six hundred. Um and our engagement rate is sitting at about six point eight percent right now, which is pretty high for just a a. Any social media account. Usually if it's four or above, that's doing really well, so our engagement rate is looking good. Um I thought, I haven't talked about this in a while, but our follower growth has been growing pretty steadily. Um. There's sort of two different things. You can follow a page without technically liking it. Or you can like a page without technically following it. It's like a thing. So we have two metrics here, so. Fans, which would be the typical thing you would think of as liking a page, that is now up to four thousand six hundred and seventy three. Uh we actually added about two hundred and fourteen just in the last thirty days. Our followers, which is our fans plus people that might not like us but choose to follow the page, is five thousand one hundred and thirty seven. And we added a hundred and seventy five of those this month. So that growth is pretty steady, but knowing that we're adding anywhere between a hundred and fifty to. Two hundred followers per month, I think is is really positive. It just means more people are receiving our messages, so that's great. Uh this month, we posted thirty six individual posts, so more than one a day. Is kinda how we ended up. And actually, the the most uh engaging. Post was our initial post about uh wildfire evacuation and. The new information that we have about that. It was the initial post, we're actually planning a series, but that one kicked it off. Uh a lot of that is spurred by shares. We had thirty one different uh pages, entities, people share it. Um and so that really drove, I think, a lot of um a lot of the engagement on that as well. So that is Facebook. As we look over to our website, get to the right screen here. We had, again, in the last thirty days, eleven thousand unique users. And of those, nine point seven thousand were new users, which follows kind of the. The numbers that we've been seeing, so that, nothing crazy there. Engagement wise, um so of those eleven thousand people, then they can have multiple page views. So those eleven thousand people viewed a page or more, uh thirty four thousand times. So it's thirty four thousand impressions on the the cumulative on the pages on our website, which is great. Let me see, in terms of what is the most popular, timing wise, it makes a lot of sense. Um the assessor's office, assessments, um assessment, notices, property assessment, there, that accounted for four of the top ten pages. That were hit. Um the fair, uh the main fair page and then the fair and rodeo schedule page accounted for two, so. Lot of that. Um homepage, obviously, the sheriff's office is always pretty um visited. And then number ten came in with our motor vehicle page, just so you know, people are looking at this, this uh this round. And then finally, our, in terms of where people are coming from, again, Boise being the highest. We had a lot from Phoenix, but um as we kinda chatted about yesterday, I think a lot of it has to do with IP addresses of the internet service provider that they are. Coming from, so when it says Phoenix is one thousand four hundred users, I think that's actually just where their IP address is routing from. I would guess they are a little more local, either to Boise uh or that general area based on who provides their internet, but. Other than that, Boise, McCall, Salt Lake, Seattle, Nampa and Meridian were our top cities uh for where people live to use the website. Um aside from that, we did a lot of work on the website. Yeah, sorry?
Can see how many people are hitting that hazard resiliency map or.
Let me look at.
Is they're asking also people to look at their um the map that now has the uh evacuation zones on it? Can you see how many people are have hit that?
That one, so that would be a question for Kara, because it's in our GIS application. It is a link out. Um it's not actually hosted on our website, so that page technically doesn't. We are, we, our analytics are not set up to click the, or to track the links clicked out. But we should be able to pull a report fairly easily about which of the applications and maps are being utilized, I would assume. Through the, through the GIS.
I'll ask Kara.
Okay, um sort of on that note, um I worked with Juan and Mara and Kara was involved as well uh to kind of streamline the evacuation messaging. When specifically wildfire, but it would, it would, you know, matter for any uh evacuation situation that we would need. The zones have been, you know, solidified, we updated. The zones have been, you know, solidified, we updated the application and then uh, we went in and there was. Of, I would say a broad assortment of pages with all various information that was slightly different, and so between the wildfire mitigation. Department and the emergency management department, we streamlined all of the evacuation pages into one central place. So that there is a cohesive and consistent definition of what like ready, set, go means, the evacuation checklist. Uh, the the application where you can go and check your evacuation zone is linked on there. And then we linked those out to all those pages, so sort of a reorganization. But what's great about that is now we are set if we do find ourselves in a situation like last year. Where we need to communicate messaging very quickly, we have a graphic series that's ready to go, we have our definitions. Solid and ready to go, so we're kind of prepped and ready for any kind of messaging that might have to happen with that. And it looks very consistent, so that's exciting.
Oh, good.
And then finally, uh, the other big kind of section that we built out was the uh fairgrounds master plan. Zone, um, there's multiple pages to that, not all of them have information just yet, but they are set up and ready to put information out. Um, the survey has been, uh, you know, linked on there and is being taken, so that whole. Kind of, I call it like the department page for the fairground master plan was built out and is now linked on the website as well, so. Those are some of the big, the big projects this month, um, and then obviously the grants, uh, the grant program, I know we talked briefly about that. I responded in um, an email today, but um, that would be, I guess, probably my next bigger focus.
And ours.
Okay, great.
We have a, we have a outline, so that's a good thing.
Cool, do you guys have any questions for me, anything, um, programs, messaging that we want to make sure we're hitting this month?
Oh, no.
Easy crowd.
There's just so much going on, I think we're all overwhelmed.
We're just gonna keep it consistent, uh, we do still continuing on with um. The content calendar that we developed, I think it's working really well, we're hitting, I think, some more in depth information for each department. Rather than just glossing over some of the current affairs reactive stuff, and so we're being able to to take a little bit deeper dive. So we'll continue that, but if there's anything additional as it arises. Uh, just shoot me an email and I'm happy to, if it's a single post, if it's news, if it's a press release, uh, whatever that might be. We're here to support as that, as that comes down the line.
Well, I think the things that we're hearing a lot about, the waterways meeting this next week. With the waterways management plan revision, so working with Dave Binghamman on continuing that conversation. Will be helpful moving forward, we're hearing a lot about roads, Dan just walked in, I'm sure he's hearing a lot about roads. So maybe work in making sure that the road division is engaged. Um, you know, just ed- educating people on. On, you know, the realities on the ground, maybe. Is I think what we need to continue to do, I think education's just a huge piece, I think. You know, and I'll put this on record, um, we're looking at this BSU hazard study. And what to me is coming out of it, there's a lot of people moving here with expectations set from where they lived. And we can't meet those expectations on the budgets that we have. And so I think that people need to understand, you're moving into an area with dirt roads, those roads are not gonna get paved tomorrow. And even if you're moving onto a paved road, that road may not get fixed as quickly as you would like it to. We need to reset expectations with what the reality is on the ground, so.
Um, a while ago, I was a while ago, I mean, maybe four years ago, I did a series that. Uh, pointed out some of the, um, I guess, key points similar to that about, um, with, that's in the code of the new west that. Uh, we have at the county and I, I think I did it with cowboy poetry, it's kind of fun, uh, but. Do you think maybe we should resurrect some of that, I think that's like an easy. Approachable way to just remind people that, you know, everything from snow plowing to um, the emergency services when you're living really far out. Uh, what it's like to live in Valley County and.
I I think that we need to do that, I think that would be helpful for all, especially as we get ready to move into winter again and. People expect a snowplow to show up at their door exactly when they expect it to show up and that's just not reality in this type of an environment. And so I think maybe resetting some expectations, this is Valley County, this is where you've moved to. We're trying and paddling as fast as we can, but. Expectations need to be level set a bit, so.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll go look at that, I'll resurrect my series and make, do some updates and we can, we can add that in, it's kind of a fun, it's a fun one anyway.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, honestly.
Perfect, um, I did have on my list very randomly, um, to ask about. What was I supposed to ask about, the annex building, I think at one point we talked about maybe doing some messaging about services that we're gonna move over. To the old Amerititle building, should I be messaging that, did I miss anything on that, I feel like I missed something on that.
No, I I do think though that we are going, well, we don't know a date yet, that's the problem. Is so once we know a date, you know, that we're gonna be transitioning over there, I think we'll need to do a lot of messaging. As the building department closes, planning and zoning closes and assessors are moved down there. That if you visit those departments, you're gonna have to go to a new location, and so as we get a date. Yeah, I would definitely ask that again next month because I think that would be perfect timing. To uh, have this conversation. So, because I think by then we will definitely be within thirty days of transition, so.
Okay, perfect, once that I asked, I'll um, I'll ask again next month, we'll just keep it, keep it top of mind.
You put it on your brain and I will take it out of mine.
Perfect, got it, done.
Alright, enjoy your time away, we will work on the grants messaging and kind of. Uh, the things that you've sent us today, when I get a chance to look at those, so.
Okay, perfect, yeah, that sounds good and I um, I will be working well away a bit, so feel free if there's something urgent, just shoot it my way.
And I think right now the biggest thing is that's impacting residents is the transfer site. And the closures there and anything happening there, so just make sure that Scott has everything up to date there, but.
Got it.
I saw one yesterday, I think, so.
Yep, we had to update, we thought Wednesday, then Friday, we got it though.
Okay, great, alright, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks so much.
Enjoy.
Hmm, bye.
Okay, next on the agenda is road and bridge. Hi, Dan.
Hello, everyone.
First discussion of many today, huh?
Yes, of many. So I'd like to just uh, talk a little bit about the action items, uh, one, one of which is the. The uh, request for another change order on the building in regards to a tariff. We have discussed it as, as the team and still are feeling pretty confident. That any tariff increases. Would give us uh, an issue long term, not just with this project, but with many projects. What we discussed as the uh, team is that this is a lump sum uh, contract. So therefore, any of these additional amounts that go over that um, uh. Should uh, fall in line with any lump sum item, so we are indicating that. But it's it's tr- uh, it's strictly up to the the board here to decide, uh, in terms of how you wanna proceed. But as the designed, design team, meaning um, internal team, that would be Dana and.
So this is the architect also involved.
Yeah, Dana is the architect.
Don't we have a contingency fund, I mean, isn't that a contingency?
Should be. So as part of this, I think we have to be very cautious in regards to it because I'm starting to. New changers might be coming in that were unforeseen. Uh, over and above the tariff, and I would be cautious at this point to to um. Allow for any of the change orders for a tariff increase until these other items start to. To roll in, um, though it sounds like it'll be kind of minor, it's more hardware on. Uh, doorways and whatnot that were overlooked in terms of accounting for. So, uh. I'm just, uh, sure, it's, our recommendation is not to proceed with the, the changer as it's stated. But um, it's up to the board in terms of how you.
Well, I, I'll weigh in on that just a little bit because. Being electrical contractor, both my suppliers told me this week that copper, they're seeing increases of copper. Because it's commodity, going up thirty percent. And I'm going, oh, that affects my bill jobs huge, you know, because we put tons of wire in a building. So, this tariff thing is a real issue. But the guy, we have to be really like cautious on seeing how much they would ask for. Because it can be like a knee jerk reaction, oh, I gotta ask for this much, so I. I'm not gonna discount the contractor wanting to offset some of these costs that he's, would have to eat. Because he wasn't expecting that when he bid the project. Who, how could you?
Uh, it's still the recommendation of the architect, uh, based on um. What they're seeing in the industry, uh, at least here, uh, is that they're not allowing uh, for tariffs at this point in time.
The thing is, is tariffs are transitory, I mean, it could be a tariff today and then it's being changed tomorrow. So how do you pay for something today that, you know, tomorrow could be down, could be up, could be, you know, sideways. I think maybe a full accounting at the end of it, like Neil's talking about, and then we could see if there is some things that we would be willing to. To look at, but that contingency fund to me is one of the reasons we put it in there is for change in cost.
And the tariffs are, tariffs is an unseen thing on any project. I've never heard that in my life until this year with what the administration did. And it's a, so it's a whole new game.
Well, and the thing with tariffs, I mean, we see price increases all the time in the home building world, especially when it's a set price, you eat it. I mean, that was, it's a cost plus, most guys are doing cost plus now for this exact reason, because they were jumping so fast. But a tariff today, you know, the administration can say it's fifty percent tariff and tomorrow it's ten. So what's your window and would you actually have to pay at the end of the day? Is something that I'm more interested in than somebody saying, well, tariff's gonna go up on this country and I buy from them and therefore, you know, my cost is going up fifty percent. Because it may not.
But so, and I agree with you on that one point is that. At the end of the job. You know, the contractor will know, hey, I got, I get hit with this X amount more in material costs than what I expected. He'll know that it's in the job, right now, I think it's a little early.
Um, the, the one thing that, I mean, I, this is something I can touch base with Dana on. But the one thing that we could do is essentially at eighty percent. A quite complete closeout because at least that way would allow it sometime to develop the. The adjustments of the costs and then it would still allow a little bit of time before actual closeout. To figure out what might potentially be um, paid for.
Yep, I think that makes sense.
Because really, this, this um, was approved last September.
Correct.
Tariffs weren't an issue then, and the contractor could have purchased everything on that date, so I don't think it's our responsibility to cover. When, when the contractor decides to purchase, if the prices have increased, that's how contracts usually work. I would move that we do not approve. The change order for the additional charges for tariffs related to purchases, maybe the road treatment facility at Gold Dust. Have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Is one moved in second or all in favor?
Aye.
And I, I think the. Now, the discussion there too is, you might be buying from one country, well, the tariff might be less somewhere else, go buy from a different place, you know? That's a purchasing deal too, so.
I think we wait till the end of the job and come back to us.
Alright, what's next?
Okay, so the next item is the local professional service agreement, this is in regards to. The LCEP project that is being administered by LTAC, um. We have uh, essentially a consultant on board, this is the agreement with the con- consultant. Uh, as you see, uh, it's um. With Precision Engineering LLC, they were selected of three. We went through um, a selection process similar to other federal aid projects. In regards to that, it is uh, about uh, well, um, this is all, all uh. This is reimbursed, uh, at our typical uh, ninety two point uh, six six. And um, so the contract here is uh, one hundred and six. Plus, uh, for it, uh, this is in regards to our Warren wagon. Safety project that is going to improve the uh, guardrails up and along that area. Indicated at the time that this was, this application was approved, that there was a death, a fatality. Uh, at a particular location which triggers the need uh, to do something, um. So, uh, one of those uh, items that you can do is actually install guardrail. Along with that, we're looking at. Trying to improve as many guardrail locations as we can with the dollar amount that we would have. I've asked LTAC to look at um, their fixed price variable quantity. Uh, uh, selection process where they could actually essentially use up every dollar of that budget item. To improve um, a linear length of guardrail along there, so that's the intent behind, behind this.
Are you working closely with Ken on this, so he's gonna be following this?
So in this one, uh, Ken and I have uh, discussed it, this is really an oversight, um. I'm sorry, an administrative oversight of LTAC, so there's really no um, uh, process in which Ken is involved. Uh, I would essentially look through or the, my predecessor will look through the reimbursement portion of it. We're always a, a second reviewer of any of those uh, uh, invoices. LTAC goes through their uh, formal process of, of making sure it fits all federal reimbursement. So it's just really a double check for us.
Is this a project that we'll see getting started this year?
Uh, it's gonna, it won't be constructed this year, but it will be designed.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's I think slated for twenty twenty six.
Hey, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with the transportation department for the Warren wagon. New guardrails.
And moved in second and all in favor?
The next item. Is for another action item, this is uh. Really, uh, it's supposed to help uh, the county out, not just the road department, but all of the county. And it's really a charge account for Cascade Building Supply. Nine times out of ten, we have to go up to McCall to do any, any purchasing of. Four by four post or anything like that. So it only makes sense to have something here local. And it would be even more sense when the department goes to Gold Dust. So um, I think it'll be a benefit long-term. Uh, they'll end up having a similar situation where each department will have its own uh code, so.
That was my question. I didn't see any limits anywhere. So it probably makes sense to make them the same as a debit card limit because they could either put it on their debit card or on this.
Yeah, yeah, it's through that purchase order um process.
And who would, who was working on setting those limits? Someone already doing that? Is Johan already working with you on that?
Uh, I, I haven't talked to Johan or specifically on that, but um, I can reach out to her and, and, and get limits for it.
Okay, Miller, is that the most logical?
Well, we don't, typically, we don't have limits like with ProBuild, uh Franklin. We do have a, I mean, a system in place, but it has been. Discussed that it's probably something we need to firm up or shore up, however you want to. Present it. It is something that needs to be worked on and a formal process probably should be implemented. Formal policy should be implemented. Uh, this was something that was discussed with the, the legal that they would like. Uh, the commissioners and the department heads, elected officials to begin having a formal policy implemented. Related to charge accounts, but again, the. The charge accounts that we typically have um locally, they're, well, I'm not typically not, there are no limits set. We have, we feel that the process that is in place has worked and we do not disagree that we need to. Uh, create a specific policy. Because right now there is not an official policy in place regarding the charge accounts that we have with our local suppliers uh in Valley County.
If we move forward and get this, but then we'll work on a policy after.
They're just playing a little open accounts.
They are. Commissioner Thompson, they're, they're open accounts. There's not a limit set, but it's probably something that the county needs to uh, again, develop a policy.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I would, oh.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I would move that we approve the charge account line of credit with Cascade Building Supply.
Second.
Been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Clark Miller, who's going to work on those? Got change? Do you have anything on my?
Knock me off.
Is that an elected officials meeting conversation? Is that, you know, the legal department's working on it just so it doesn't fall off the radar?
Yeah, I think uh, Madam Chairman, I think. Probably at this point in time, the, the initial work should be done by the clerk's office. Uh, as we are responsible for accounts payable, um, but I will reach out to legal directly and work with them on just the. A draft and then provide the draft outline to the commissioners for review. Ultimately, it's going to be the commissioners making the decision, but I do think that the clerk's office should be the one to begin it.
Cool. Thank you, Dan. Well, um, I, I, we can discuss anything you want to discuss, but I was assuming, um, because there's a, a maybe more of a. An open discussion on the workshop that we'll essentially go through that on other items or however you want to do it.
Did we ever get an appraiser? Not appraiser, I'm not saying. Mine's going blank.
Uh, sometimes I have that problem too.
We're going to stick to the agenda, Brian, our last session will start at three thirty. From what his said, so we will start with two fifteen with the executive. So if you can be here for that, then we'll move into the workshop.
Okay.
And if Jeff can attend that one also.
Yeah, he, he's uh planning to be here.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Okay, thank you.
He's in. Okay, last for this morning is the meeting minutes uh for, let's start with July twenty-third. Everybody get a chance to look at those.
Yep.
Okay, I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of July twenty-third.
Second.
I moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
And then Clark Miller, do you want the BOE minutes separate or is one motion?
One motion is just fine.
I would move that we approve the BOE meeting minutes from June twenty-fifth, June twenty-sixth, and July fourteen.
Second.
Is one moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That being the last on our agenda, we will recess and reconvene at one o'clock.